Good evening. The regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council is called to order on Monday, February thirteenth, 2023, at 5:30 PM for closed session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dutton.
Here.
Councilmember Coops.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Mayor Protam Hamada. Mayor Santanes.
Here. I'll entertain a motion to excuse the absence of Mayor Protam Hamada.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Coops, seconded by Councilmember Sanchez, to excuse the absence of Mayor Protam Hamada. Without objection, that will be the order. Okay, closed session. Mr. Stewart.
We have initiated litigation for cases, code enforcement. The first address is 9555 Ramona Street, second is 9920 Flora Vista, third is 10117 Rose Crans, and the fourth is 9335 Oak Streets.
Okay, does anyone have any conflicts on these four items? None?
None.
Okay, and there's no one from the public to speak about this? So with that, we will now recess to closed session. Good evening, everyone. The regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council is called to order on Monday, February thirteenth, 2023, at 7:00 PM. We are going to open session, and we are reconvening from the closed session. And I'd like to report that there was no reportable action taken during the closed session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dutton.
Here.
Councilmember Coops.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Mayor Protam Hamada. Mayor Santanes.
Here. I'll entertain a motion to excuse the absence of Mayor Protam Hamada.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Coops, seconded by Councilmember Sanchez, to excuse the absence of Mayor Protam Hamada. Without objection, that will be the order. Tonight's invocation will be led by Councilmember Ray Danton, and the pledge of allegiance will be led by our Director of Public Safety, Joel Huckman. So please rise.
Please bow your heads. Oh, Heavenly Father, thank you for all you do, and thank you for guiding us here tonight to make the best decisions as possible. Watch over us as we make Bellflower a better place to work, live, and play. Also, watch over our first responders, our military, the needy, and the homeless. In your name, amen.
Amen.
Please face the flag and join me in saying, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you, Ray, and thank you, Joel. Tonight is a special night. We have a huge audience, because this is a very special occasion. But let me start with announcements for this evening. The city is applying for a Clean California Local Grant Program, and we want to hear from you about what improvements we would like to see at the Town Center Plaza. The grant program, developed by the California Department of Transportation, otherwise known as Caltrans, provides funds for local communities to improve and beautify our streets, roads, parks, transit centers, and more. The goal is to enhance communities and create better spaces for walking and recreation. If you'd like to share your input in person, the city's Economic Development Department will be at the Town Center Plaza tonight, February thirteenth, from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM, during the Bellflower Market, Bellflower Farmers Market, located at 16521 Edelman Avenue. If you would like to participate but don't have the time to meet with us, be sure to log on to our website, which is www.bellflower.org, to take the brief online survey. Councilmember Coops.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To help support local business owners, the city of Bellflower highlights new businesses, special events, and holiday celebrations, and grand openings. You can watch those in monthly e-citizen newsletter at no cost. To request a free ribbon-cutting ceremony, or learn how to feature your business in a short video for Bellflower's YouTube, please email economic underscore development at bellflower.org, or simply call 562-804-1424, extension 2249. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dan. Councilmember Victor Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Bellflower. Bellflower's multifamily communities and commercial facilities are key partners with the city and its trash and recycling hauler, CRNR Environmental Services, in meeting state-mandated recycling requirements. California has several recycling mandates that apply to multifamily and commercial properties, including food scrap and landscape waste recycling requirements of Senate Bill 1383, as well as with SB 1383, requires all commercial customers and multifamily properties to participate in an organic materials collection program as of January 1st, 2022. CRNR Environmental Services and the city of Bellflower launched a food scrap and landscaping recycling program that conveniently collects organic waste materials from multifamilies and commercial properties and transport them to a composting facility. To establish these required recycling services now, please contact CRNR Environmental Services at bellflower underscore recycles at crnmail.com, or call 562-944-4716. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Victor. Councilmember Ray Dunn.
Thank you, Mayor. Stop by the Bellflower Chamber of Commerce office for the last Tuesday of every month for our monthly morning mingle. This networking event serves as a great platform to learn about local small businesses and community projects in town. The next chamber's meeting for the morning mingle is set for Tuesday, February 28th, at 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM, at the Chamber office located at the northeast corner of Bellflower Boulevard and Flower Street. For more information or join the Chamber of Commerce, please call 562-867-1744. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ray. Tonight, we have three special presentations, starting with the student recognition for the Community Recycling Artwork Contest. That's why we have lots of kids tonight. And the second presentation is for the National Black History Month. We'll be presenting that to the certificate to the superintendent of Bellflower Unified School District. And the third presentation is to recognize the Bellflower High School's successful football season for last year. So I'd like to invite my colleagues to join me in the riser. So we'll start first with the art competition recognition.
Mr. Mayor, member of the council, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. My name is Kevin Sales, and I've been very fortunate for the last, gosh, 24 years now. The city has sponsored this calendar, and that's why all these students are here, because they're the ones who created the artwork for it. So what I'd like to do is to give you a little bit of background, and then have the students come up. And ladies and gentlemen, when I talk to you outside, I'd like you, after we're done with the students' recognition, I'd like you to go back to your seats, because we do have those other two presentations. And then after all the presentations are done, then we'll go outside. Okay, thank you very much. So the calendar is done every year by the city. It's funded by CalRecycle up at Sacramento. And in the fall, we do a presentation at the schools and invite fifth graders to participate, creating artwork for the annual Community Recycling Awareness Calendar, which, if you haven't seen it, I have it right here. It's not too late in the year now to put this up on your wall, so I want to see them all up there. All right, so I want to introduce these students. Now, students, here's how it's going to work. I'm going to call your name, and you're going to go on up. And council, my better half here, Pinky, will hand you the awards for the students, and you can feel free to give those out however you feel fit. And then, students, when you're done, they're going to take an individual photo with the council. Then I believe we're going to take a group photo at the end, okay? So after you get your awards and your photo, if you would come over, I'll just have you sort of stand over here next to me in the front, and then when we're all done, we'll all go back up and do the group photo. Okay, enough of me talking. All right. So let me go ahead and get started here. So, yes, sir. Oh, there you go. You heard it from the boss himself. So please feel free to take photos, if you'd like, as your student goes up. Okay, our first winner is Xavier Deanda. Not sure if Xavier's here. I didn't see him. Okay, well, that's unfortunate. He's from Ramona and featured on the cover. David Lozano, first prize winner, from Albert Baxter. David? Okay, well, we'll get those out of the way. All right. Chloe Tang, second prize, from Stephen Foster. Chloe, I know you're here. And Chloe, if you'd just come and stand right over here next to me on this side. Okay, next, we have Caitlin Dominguez Angelus, from Thomas Jefferson. See, this is a lot harder than it looks, you guys, okay? By the way, they're all receiving a certificate of achievement and also a medal, and they're also getting some movie tickets and a shopping card for their friendly Walmart. Genevieve Shev? Genevieve is here? No? Okay. Chloe Gonzalez? There you go. Okay, and Nadine Ortiz? Nadine here? No? Okay. Damian Pallad? Good job. Next, Williams Cormac Pond. And last but not least, Mia Tran, from Albert Baxter Elementary. Did we lose Julian? Oh, setting the group up. Guys, come on, we're going to try to get one shot with all of you in it, so. Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor? I'm sorry, we had one student just come in late. May I go ahead and call him and do the presentation? All right, let me find it here. I'm sorry. It's, come on up, it's David Lozano. David, are you here? There you go. Okay.
Okay. David is our first place?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, he's not. First prize, yeah. Go on up there, David, and we'll get your shot, and then we'll put everybody together. Most involved part of the whole evening. One more picture.
One more picture. Of course. This month, we are honoring the National Black History Month. So I just read this proclamation. It is, and before I do that, I'd like to invite the superintendent, Dr. Ben Droudi, I think this evening is very special, because this is the school district's night, actually. Okay, perfect timing. So in appreciation of the city of Bellflower proclaims the National Black History Month, and I want to read this proclamation, because every word of this really means something. Whereas in 1976, Black History Month was extended to a month-long observance during the month of February, and whereas Black History Month was originally adopted to honor and affirm the importance of the history of African-Americans and to focus on the stories and teachings of those who helped build our nation, advance the cause of civil rights, and strengthen families and communities. And whereas communities across the nation organize events to commemorate and carry on this tradition. And whereas African-Americans have made valuable and lasting contributions to our country, our state, and the city, achieving success in all aspects of society, including business, education, politics, science, and the arts. And whereas Bellflower residents are encouraged to celebrate our diverse heritage and culture, and continue our efforts to create a world that is more just, peaceful, and prosperous for all. Now, therefore, I, Sunny R. Santanes, mayor of the city of Bellflower, do hereby proclaim February 2023 as National Black History Month. Signed, Mayor Sunny R. Santanes, Mayor Protam Raymond Hamada, Councilmember Ray Danton, Councilmember Dan Coops, and Councilmember Victor Sanchez. This one is very special, because Bellflower is a melting pot. There's so many cultures in Bellflower, so many ethnicities, and we are so proud to celebrate each one of them. And it's our time to recognize the contributions of our broader African-Americans. So I'm very proud, on behalf of the city of Bellflower and all the residents here, I'm very proud to present this proclamation to our brand-new superintendent of Bellflower Unified School District, Dr. Ben Droudi.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Santanes, and rest of the city council members. You know, this is a beautiful, beautiful site here, and I'm looking at all my students here, and the parents, and this diversity of this place. It's why I accepted to come to Bellflower Unified from Santa Monica, Malibu, just because of the diversity and what this place will bring. So I love seeing this. I love the fact that the city of Bellflower is able to recognize the importance of making sure that the citizens of this country, this contribution is actually recognized. And unfortunately, we have to have a month to focus on certain groups, like the African-Americans. I believe there's Hispanic Heritage Month, and there's Women's History Month. There's different months that we assign to make sure that we are focusing on the contribution of all those people that make this great country. I am personally looking forward to the day where that won't be a need, because when we teach history, it is actually just taught in history to the fullest extent. So, but this is, this is great, that you're recognizing this, and in front of our students, this has demonstrated how important diversity is to the world. And America is a great place. It is a great place, but we all come from somewhere else to make this a great place, and we always have to recognize the people that helped build this country for making what it is. So thank you for everything you're doing, and I appreciate it.
Coach Miller is the coach of last year's Bellflower Varsity Football Team, and if you're not following football, they were awesome. And just to give you the highlights, they were the CIF Southern Section Division One champion. Oh, runner-up, runner-up. In my heart, they are champions, okay? And they did a fantastic job, and the season was 11-3 record. And those guys from Maldonado, I don't like them. I don't like them at all. So, but Coach Miller, thank you so much for your contribution. Thank you so much for bringing this level of playing to the football team. Three of the council members here are alumni of Bellflower High School. I am not, but my kids are alumni of Bellflower High School. So that made it up. So again, congratulations on behalf of the city for a fantastic job, and we look forward to your, another successful year. And with that, we'll give you this proclamation, this certificate of achievement, presented to the Bellflower High School Varsity Football Team under Coach Jason Miller. Congratulations on the tremendous 2022 football season. The city of Bellflower commends you for your hard work and dedication. We wish you continued success, don't we? Yes, okay. Signed, Mayor Arnie Sunny R. Santanes, Mayor Protam Raymond Hamada, Councilmember Ray Danton, Councilmember Dan Coops, and Councilmember Victor Sanchez, presented today, February
The fifth graders here, when I was a sub, my favorite grade to sub was fifth grade. They always wrote nice letters, right? Continue to write your subs, nice notes when they leave. We really appreciate that. You know what? I got here July 2nd. I was in the Bay Area the last five years, coaching in Palo Alto, California, right next to Stanford. And so it was a very different population. I'm so glad to be home. I come from a diverse background. I come from the South Bay here, and I'm so glad to be a part of this population, and this community was on fire, so supportive of us. Mayor Santanes was so supportive of us. I wanted to have all of our players sign a helmet and bring it for your desk. We can't get one for all the councils, so we'll just put We can't get one for all the councils, so we'll just put it in Mayor Santinaz's desk.
We're gonna share this.
And you know, briefly, when I got here, you know, you heard about the wins and losses, but it's not what I was most proud of. We had a grade problem on our team. And I'm just happy to say that we had a team varsity GPA of 3.2 this year. So you know, the hard work on academics showed off in commitment, and you know, we're really developing a well-rounded individual. So now you understand that there is more than one high school in Bellflower that you could send your kids to to play some good football. Thank you.
Well said. Thank you so much. All right, thank you again. I know you have homework to do, but if you'd like to listen to the proceedings here, you're more than welcome. But I don't think your teachers will be very happy. So you may be excused at this point.
Good job, Son. Been done with them, huh?
No, this is the last one.
Oh, look forward to seeing you after. Congratulations.
Well, that was awesome. It's the Bellflower Unified School District Night tonight. And it just, I think the stars just align well. They're all from the Unified School District. So anyway, next item on the agenda, Mr. Public Comments, Mr. Stewart.
Yeah, this is the time set aside for the public to address the city council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the city council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we review that particular item. You'll be given three minutes to address the city council.
Okay, before you do that, I just want to ask you to please sign in because the city clerk needs your name and also state your name for the record. And also, one more thing, please speak to the microphone, because I was told that previous comments were not captured entirely. So please make a point to speak to the microphone. Thank you.
I am going to sign in. Hello? Hello, mayor and council members. I am Julia Emerson with the Southern California Gas Company, and I'm here tonight to talk about high bills. Some of you know that the gas bills have been extremely high this month. We're fully aware of that, obviously. We want you to know that even though the bills were higher than usual, much higher than usual, there's some good news. First, the bills are coming down. So we're looking at the markets and where they're coming down. So that's, we're seeing a good trend there. We are trying to provide an update to our customers because, you know, we know that the high bills have been top of mind for a lot of folks, and especially those who may be interested in income-qualified programs that we have. The market changes each month. The gas company buys the gas from the producers, and we transport it to our customers here in Southern California. The gas company does not mark up the price. We put the price through as we purchase it to our customers. The prices are determined by these national and regional markets, and there's a perfect storm of several things going on at once to create these high prices. Fortunately, again, it is starting to come down. I also have a good, a little bit of good news to share, that the public, the California Public Utilities Commission is going to be accelerating a little bit of a credit. And so residential customers should receive a credit of about $50 in either their February or March bill. It's called the California Climate Credit for Southern California residential customers. And we, meanwhile, are trying to reach out to inform our cities, our customers, and anyone, that there are ways that we may be able to help, especially for income-qualified customers. We have on our website many programs, bill assistance, forgiveness, home improvement programs to cut down your use of gas, and something called the Level Pay Program. We're also delaying collection activities and delaying disconnections for most residential customers and business customers even until at least March 1st. Residential gets a little longer. SoCalGas has donated $1 million to the Gas Assistance Fund to help these customers be able to pay their bills when they need to. To learn more, anyone can go to the, on their computers, socalgas.com/assistance? Or just go to socalgas.com, and you'll see where you can click and learn more about these programs. We're hoping that you'll lower your bills, and if anyone has any questions, or if you have customers with questions that you'd like to refer to me, please do so. And I know your wonderful city clerk knows how to get ahold of me. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Julia. I have a couple of questions. This is really important because I've been getting inquiries from residents. One is you mentioned about Southern California gas doesn't markup. What, so if you can educate me, how do you guys make money?
We pay, we charge a fee for transporting the gas. So when you look on a gas bill, you know, there are a lot of different things, but one of them is transportation. And we are paid in a deal that we make with the state, Public Utilities Commission or under the state. You know, we're very closely watched by the state of California, and they say, okay, you can charge for transportation, but the commodity, the gas, that is a pass-through price. We agree to do that, that's how we do it. So if we pay this for the gas over here, that's what we charge the customer. And then we do add the transportation cost.
Okay, so that's very clear. So basically, we don't pay you for the product, we pay you for the service of delivering the gas to us.
I guess that's one way to look at it. We pass the price through, yes.
That's good to know. And the second question about the rebate, you said $50?
About $50.
Is it per month or one time?
It's a one-time, it's a one-time rebate. Thank you for bringing that up, a credit.
Can you guys make it monthly? I have to ask, okay?
Have to ask.
I have to ask.
But we do have lots of programs. I hope people will either go to socalgas.com, or again, people can contact me if they have further questions or if I can help in any way.
All right, thank you. Any question of Julia? All right.
I do.
Okay. Councilmember Danton.
Good seeing you again, Julie.
Good seeing you. It's so wonderful to be back in person. Thank you.
Yeah, exactly. We can see each other's smiles, too. On the storage in, I don't know if you can answer that question, but you lost a big storage facility in Santa Clarita area. And does that part of it, because you would buy low in the hotter months and store it there, and now you're not storing it with the low gas, is that why some of it's higher now?
You have a very good understanding of how the storage works. Thank you. But the good news is, we have not lost that storage field. We call it the Aliso Canyon Storage Field. And it's, it's, the state of California has asked, well told, that we don't put as much gas in it as we used to. But we're still putting many, 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 many cubic feet.
Because that's one of the biggest ones the Southern California gas had, right?
It is.
Huge.
It's the biggest one of all.
Yeah.
And so.
What is it, a 75% capacity then, or?
I think it's at 60%, I want to say, but I might, I might need to check that.
But the gas company uses, buys low, stores it for the winter.
That's exactly what we do. We buy it in the summer when the prices tend to be low. And we put it in storage so that when the prices go high, we can pull it out. And we are right now pulling gas out to try to put a little downward pressure on those prices.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you, Julia.
Thank you.
Thank you. No, under public comments, you can make a comment. Okay. All right.
Yeah, well, public comment, coming up, yeah.
Make a comment.
One moment.
Ms. Palacios? Oh, okay.
Hi there. Good evening.
Please speak to the microphone. I was told that they don't capture you well. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and Mr. Gorecki. I just want to express a huge thank you for moving the crosswalk on Rosen Clark from the north side, south side to the north side, on behalf of the residents at Bright Star, Assisted Living, and me and my neighbors. We really do appreciate it. It is much appreciated. I'm beginning to get a bigger understanding of what all goes on in Bellflower. So anyway, we do really appreciate it, really help them to be able to get across because they don't have the same abilities that some of us has, that can run and jump and all that. So it did help in that. The safety issue is still there, so we're wondering, what's the next step? What's the procedure for getting either flashing yellow lights or a light bar on that corner? We still have a safety issue. Street sweeping is Fridays. People move their cars out to Clark. You met my guy. They go out, I had several neighbors, you go out there to get your cars, and they're honking, blah, blah, blah. You know, you have to cross the street to get your car, and these are abled people, not disabled people. So it does look like we are having too much speeding in our city, I guess not just in my area, but we also have a road rage issue. I don't know what we can do for that. But anyway, we're wondering, what's the procedure to get the flashing yellow lights or the light bar? And what will it take for us to get that? Is it cost? What's the timeframe, et cetera? And the comment I have on her thing is that we were discussing that today. I have a community care team that I work with, and we were discussing because different people of fixed incomes have received different degrees of bills. So this $50 California Climate Credit, when you, when your bill increased 500% or it increased 10%, and that $50 credit is not... I don't want to say the words they said, but it's, it doesn't seem fair for somebody's bill to jump from here to here, and you get $50. And somebody jumps from here to here, and you get $50. $50 for a fixed-income person is still a whole lot, let alone... Okay, so that's it. Anyway, so I'm just wondering about the flashing lights or the light bar. Perfect time.
All right, thank you, Ms. Palacios.
Thank you.
And I'm sure that staff is looking into that, because that was talk about at the last meeting. We gave directions to our Public Safety Director to look into it, also our Public Works Director. So they're looking into it. And again, thank you so much for coming and reporting back that the crosswalk were painted. And as far as the gas is concerned, we're on the same page, okay? All right, thank you so much. Anyone else?
Good evening. So earlier in the council members' updates, someone had mentioned that there was the grant that the city had received to improve our roads and kind of like a pedestrian infrastructure. And so I had swung by the farmer's market last, last week on Monday, and I had spoken, just filled out that form about the Town Center Plaza. But while I was having a conversation with the city staff member that was there, something that I had brought up with her, and then she had kind of like echoed back with me, and kind of gave me some information on, was possibly a bike lane on Lakewood Boulevard. I'm a commuter. I, over in the weekends, I work over at the Lomito Railroad Museum, and so the way I get there is by biking on Lakewood Boulevard to the Lakewood Sea Line Station. And so the sidewalk there is relatively thin, it's kind of small, and it's impossible to ride your bike on it because there's electrical poles that are in the middle of the sidewalk. So you have to ride on the street. And so when you're riding on the street, sometimes there's a lot of debris, there's lots of broken glass and rocks, and you have to kind of manage yourself with the cars that are passing by. The street is wide enough to ride your bike on Lakewood Boulevard, but not, I guess, not every driver considers that there could be a cyclist on that road. And so when I was talking to city staff about this at the farmer's market, someone, she had mentioned that Lakewood Boulevard wasn't necessarily under the city's jurisdiction to work on in the past few years, but lately, she said that something had changed or something was going to change with that. And so I just wanted to throw out there with that grant, if it's possible, for the city to look into possibly a bike lane there, just to improve cyclist safety on Lakewood Boulevard. So that's it.
All right, thank you. Did you share your input with staff? Did you share your input with the staff?
Yes, yes. I think the booth that they have is really cool, and they were giving out T-shirts.
Oh, okay, I see. All right. Thank you.
Should I turn this off?
All right, anyone else? Public comments? Okay, seeing that, we're moving on to the next item. Item 11A, Mr. Stewart.
It's a public hearing to conduct, a public hearing to adopt Resolution Number 23-06, Resolution Adopting Development Impact Fees for public facilities, park facilities, public safety facilities, transportation facilities, in accordance with Chapter 3.40 of the Bellflower Municipal Code. And to read by title only, wait for the reading, introduce ordinance number 1424, and ordinance repealing Chapter 3.24 and Sections 3.36.0202O and 3.36.06O of the Bellflower Municipal Code, adding new Chapter 3.403, 3.40.3, 3.36.06, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, right. Of the Bellflower Municipal Code, and adding new Chapter 3.40 entitled Development Impact Fees to Title III of the Bellflower Municipal Code for the purpose of imposing fees on applicants seeking to construct development projects. Ms. Guerin has the staff report for you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. For tonight's presentation, we will discuss the updates to the Development Impact Fees Nexus Study and the Subcommittee's recommendation. To provide a quick recap, city council study session was held on September 13, 2021, to present the updated amounts for the two existing development impact fees, park facilities and public facilities fees. At that time, city council directed staff to add public safety and transportation facilities fees. We work with well-done department heads to calculate those fees, and they will be discussed in the subsequent slides. In addition, the city council formed a two-member Subcommittee to further review the updated fees and new fees to provide recommendations to the city council for consideration. On May 9, 2022, the Subcommittee meeting was held. As you are aware, development impact fees are one-time fees imposed on new developments to ensure capital costs associated with growth and population and service demand are funded. The revenue collected must be spent on capital facilities and not on operations and maintenance costs. To calculate public safety facilities fees, we have included an estimated cost of a substation and public safety vehicles and equipment. They total $9.8 million. The cost for a substation is $9.2 million over an 18-year planning horizon. Cost estimate only includes construction, furnishings, and equipment costs. Other public safety vehicles and equipment total approximately $650,000. To calculate the transportation facilities fees, we have used existing inventory of large-cost items totaling $204 million. They include roadways, cribs and gutters, sidewalks to drive aprons, curb ramps, signals, and streetlights. For the public facilities fees, we are using total inventory of $56 million to calculate the fees. They include the city hall, city yard, the main event center and fire museum, regional transit center and parking structure, and vehicles and equipment. For the park facilities fees, we are using the value of special-use facilities inventory and other park facilities cost. The special-use facilities inventory value, along with the standard park improvement The special use facilities inventory value along with the standard park improvements and land acquisition costs are translated into a per-acre cost of about three point six million dollars. The study uses a Parkland standard of two and a half acres per a thousand residents to calculate the park facilities fees. AB six-oh-two was signed into law on September twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-one, and the new provisions were effective in twenty-twenty-two. It generally requires the fees to be charged based on a per-square-foot basis for the Nexus Studies adopted after July first, twenty-twenty-two. So we have converted our residential per-dwelling unit fees to per-square-foot fees to comply with this new law. AB six-oh-two also established other transparency requirements and guidelines for the Nexus Studies. More importantly, Nexus Studies must be adopted every eight years, and a capital improvement plan is required to be adopted as part of the study. This is a comparison of current fees with the updated and new fees. The Subcommittee members recommended that the City Council considers adopting the mu-, the maximum justifiable fees for all four facilities fees. The current fees for residential units are per-dwelling units, so as discussed, they have been converted into per-square-foot fees to comply with AB six-oh-two. Single-family unit fees have been divided by the average size of fourteen-hundred square feet, while multifamily units have been divided by the average size of one thousand square feet. The total of all the proposed fees are at the right side of the slide under the total column. This slides illustrates fee comparisons and fee increases for the average-sized residential units. For the average fourteen-hundred-square-feet single-family unit, the updated fee is thirty-nine thousand, and the current fee is twenty-three thousand, so the fee increase is sixteen thousand. The lower table shows that for the average one-thousand-square-feet multifamily unit, the updated fee is thirty-two thousand, and the current fee is nineteen thousand, so the fee increase is twelve thousand. For comparison purposes, the right hand of this, of this slide shows the updated fees at declining scales, ninety percent, eighty percent, and so forth of the maximum fee allowed. This slide shows the fees and fee increases for a typical twenty-five-hundred-square-feet fast-food store in Bellflower. The updated fee is twenty-four thousand. The current fee is only four hundred seventy-five dollars, so the fee increase is about twenty-four thousand. Most of the fee increase is due to the addition of the public safety and transportation facilities fees. Similar to the previous slide, the right-hand side of the slide shows the updated fees at declining scale. The next three slides compare Bellflower's recommended development impact fees with neighboring and nearby cities. The table shows the fees for the common types of development in the city of Bellflower, which are fourteen-hundred-square-feet single-family residential unit, one-thousand-square-feet multifamily residential unit, twenty-five-hundred-square-feet fast-food restaurant with drive-through. And then prior to AB six-oh-two, there's no suggested standard way of imposing development impact fees. So cities are allowed to adopt any methodology of charging fees as long as it's reasonable and justifiable. This is also why a number of assumptions were made to calculate the estimated fees in this table, including the averages of the square footage, number of dwelling units, bedrooms, and seats in a fast-food restaurant, lot size, and fire flow rates. Based on the maximum fees, the estimated development impact fee revenue increase is three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars annually. Along with the fee adjustments, staff also recommends repealing the existing development impact fee Chapter three point two-four and replacing it with a new consolidated J-, this Chapter three point four-oh for all four development impact fees. All of the sections of the existing chapter have been incorporated into the new consolidated chapter. Staff also recommends repealing certain provisions of the existing Chapter three point three-six. First one is to repeal BMC Section three point three-six zero-six-zero, to remove the option that permits a person to use an appraisal report to pay lower park facilities fees. We believe this just entices, uh, larger developers to produce appraisal reports to pay the lowest possible fees, which may not be equitable to other fee payers. The second one is to repeal BMC Section three point three-six zero-two-zero, again for the park facilities fees. We are proposing to remove the fifty percent fee discount for the second dwelling unit and the requirement to recover the discounted fee in the event a third unit is constructed. Since the fees have been converted from per-dwelling unit to per-square-foot fees, the fee for an additional unit, which is typically smaller in size, will be proportionately smaller. Staff recommends that the City Council to open the public hearing, take documentary and testimonial evidence, and after considering the evidence, adopt Resolution twenty-three dash oh-six, adjusting existing and adding new development impact fees, and read by title only, waive further reading, and introduce ordinance number fourteen twenty-four to impose development impact fees for public park, public safety, and transportation facilities fees by repealing BMC Chapter three point two-four and Sections three point three-six zero-two-zero and three point three-six zero-six-zero, and adding a new Chapter three point four-oh. Or alternatively, discuss and take other action related to this item. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Carlos Villarreal from Weldon Financial Services is also here to assist with any questions.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Guerin, for a very, uh, extensive explanation. And I also want to thank, uh, take this opportunity to thank, um, Councilmember Denton and Councilmember Sanchez for serving in that Subcommittee. I think they did a wonderful job. Uh, can, can you go back to the previous slide? I just have a clarifying question, or comments. So, in, in the second, in second, um, uh, suggestion here, recommendation, not to use the appraisal report anymore. It's going to be based on square footage. So it's more, it's more objective and less subjective in a way, because there's no more value involved. It's just, whatever one square foot is, you pay this impact fee.
That is correct.
Okay. And then ca-, can you bring back the slide on the transportation, how, what are the components of the transportation facilities? There you go. So the, so these are basically the, the cost of the roadways, for example, sixty-five million?
Yes, that's based on the existing inventory that we have.
Okay, so if we were to reconstruct the roadways, it's going to cost us using the dollar value twenty years ago, thirty years ago, sixty-five, sixty-five million, I'm assuming. That was the value back then, right? Not, not the current.
So if I may, this table shows, oh, and I, I'm Carlos Villarreal with Weldon Financial Services. I worked on the study. This table shows the existing replacement cost of your existing facilities inventory. So if
Oh, so the placement cost?
Yeah, so if the city were to replace all of the roadways today and all of the items included here, it would cost about two-hundred-and-four thousand dollars, or I'm sorry, two-hundred-and-four million dollars. The impact fee would not be funding two-hundred-and-four million dollars. We use this to estimate what the, the city has contributed to thus far on a per-trip basis. And then new development, uh, on a per-trip basis would fund proportionally the same amount of facilities going forward. So this is just used as a proxy to estimate new developments' impact, but this is what the replacement cost of your current system is today.
Okay, just to get some kind of value.
Exactly.
Okay, all right, very good. Thank you. Okay, any question of Ms. Guerin? Uh, Councilmember Coops?
Could you put up the page again that has to do with the fifty, you want us to take out something about fifty percent? So if I own a home and I want to put in an ADU, what is my responsibility for the impact fees currently?
Currently.
Yeah.
So for ADUs, we still have to take the square footage of the ADU and then, um, look at the primary home, and then take the, uh, ratio, and then multiply it with the current fees that we have.
So if I have a thousand-square-foot home, and I'm building a four-hundred-square-foot ADU, that's fourteen-hundred square feet.
So it would be four hundred over a thousand times the current fee.
Okay, and so if we were to approve what's been presented, the fifty percent, it, well, that will like be eliminated and will go four bo-, full bore on the ADU? Is that what you're saying here?
No, so what this is, is because we're switching from a per-dwelling unit to a per-square-footage fee,
Right.
it would be proportionately lower. So we'll still do four hundred over a thousand times the per-square-foot fees. But before, since it's based on a per-dwelling unit fee, um, it's much higher as opposed to per-square footage.
So there'll be some relief for ADUs on the development fees?
Yes, that is correct, because the project, ADUs projects are normally smaller in size because we're now basing it on the square footage, the total fee is expected to be smaller as well.
All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Members of the council, if I can jump in about ADUs, they're actually exempt from impact fees based upon new legislation coming down from the state.
Currently or in the future?
January first.
Of this year?
Of this year.
Hey, that's good to know.
Okay. And, any question? Uh, Councilmember Sanchez?
A follow-up on that. Is that based off of a certain size limitation? Under seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet and under, or total?
It, the ADU, if it's classified as an ADU under state legislation, it is exempt from paying impact fees.
As long as it's allowed.
Correct.
Interesting. Thank you.
Councilmember Denton?
No questions.
No questions? Oh. You must have done a wonderful job. There are no questions. All right.
It's Alte and Carlos.
Move to open the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Coops, seconded by Councilmember Sanchez to open the public hearing. Without objection, that will be the order. Anyone who'd like to speak on this item? This is very exciting.
And dry.
Very exciting.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second, motion by Councilmember Coops, seconded by Councilmember Sanchez to close the public hearing. Without objection, that will be the order.
Mayor?
Okay, uh, yeah, just one, one clarification on the, uh, there's a slide that shows eight years. Can, can you clarify that? Uh, you mentioned about something to do with the study every eight years?
Yes, so with AB six-oh-
First time I heard about this, so okay, I'm just trying, trying to clarify that.
So with AB six-oh-two, um, cities are now mandated to update the Nexus Study every eight years.
Similar to what we have done this time?
Yes.
Okay, so that's some cost relief, otherwise, every year is going to be a lot expensive. Okay, so, having said that, um, we can still, these rates are subject to change every year based on CPI.
That is correct.
Okay, so we're still increasing it, and then ages from now, we're going to be doing the same similar study, and then depending on the study, then we will make some adjustment at that point.
That is correct.
Okay, oh, that's clear. All right, very good. Thank you. All right, gentlemen, what's your pleasure?
I'll go ahead and make a motion if you, you'd like, Mayor.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
Like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number twenty-three dash zero-six, adjusting the existing and adding new development impact fees, and waive further reading, and introduce ordinance number fourteen twenty-four to impose development impact fees for public park, public safety, and transportation facilities.
I want to have a little discussion before we go forward.
You can second the motion and
Well, I'm not going to do that right, right now, unless you want me to. I, I, I'm concerned for some of these fees.
No, we can have this, when you second, we can, we can do the discussion.
All right, I'll second the motion, but I want to still have some discussion.
Sure, absolutely. Uh, under Roberts will be, we're allowed to do that.
Okay.
All right, motion by, uh, Councilmember Denton, seconded by Councilmember Coops, to take action on this suggestions from staff. All right, Councilmember Coops?
Single-family resident, so I come in to build a new home in Balfour. I'm going to spend thirty-nine thousand dollars based on the square footage that's been lined out. Look at all the others, comparisons, the other cities. I, you know, Balfour is sixty-eight percent non-owner occupied, and we like to promote the fact that we want more single-family. It's more than, uh, multifamily. Now, I'm not concerned as much as I am for multifamily because that's an income producer, as is commercial, but when I come to buy or build a home in Bellflower, and I got to lay out thirty-nine thousand dollars, and it's not an income producer, that's a pretty stiff hit. And I want to know if we can reduce that, if I get a consensus here. Look what other cities are charging. The lo-, closest thing we can come through is Cypress at twenty-four thousand, but we're way out beyond our skis on this thing at thirty-nine thousand dollars. And that's the discussion that I would like to have. I'm okay with the rest, but that first one sticks in my craw.
The single family?
Single family. That's a lot of money to come in and, on a thou-, what's our basis, a thousand square foot, eleven hundred, something like that?
Fourteen hundred.
Fourteen hundred.
Uh, Ms. Guerin, can, can you show that slide where you have some kind of sliding scale?
Yeah, okay.
Maybe that will have the discussion. There you go.
And, and Mr. Mayor, members of the council, maybe we can have a clarification on the thirty-nine thousand. That's a estimate.
That's an estimate, based on the average, um, size of a
Based upon average square footage.
Understand. It could be more, it could be less.
So, Mr. Mayor, to clarify here, what we're looking at is, um, at fourteen hundred square feet, a single-family residential home, we're looking at sixteen thousand, correct?
That's the fee increase.
That would be the fee increase. So, so the total would be for a fourteen hundred single-family home, it would be thirty-nine thousand?
Correct.
Mr. Uh, Councilmember Coops, I, I see your concern here, and I, and I, you know what, I do agree with you.
That's a lot of money and a big jump for something we'd like to promote.
Right.
I, a question to City Attorney. Can we, um, based on this sliding scale, do we need to provide any justification to, to charge less than hundred percent?
Not for this particular instance. Uh, it's a public policy discretionary determination by the City Council, understanding that if the city does not collect sufficient amount of impact fees based upon this calculation, at some time in the future, you may be subsidizing projects using general fund, uh, in the future. So, I, you know, whenever that is in the future, uh, that is something that you need to consider. So, for example, if it's a million-dollar project, and if you only collected five-hundred thousand dollars in impact fees, you're going to have to come up with the other five-hundred thousand dollars somewhere.
Hmm, okay. Also, as a follow-up question, uh, is there anything that will prevent us from, let's say, let's, just for the sake of discussion, let's say we adopt seventy percent tonight, and next year we say, okay, well, it's not enough. Can we go back? Can we go to eighty percent next year, and then the next year ninety percent and hundred percent? Is, is anything that will prevent us from doing that?
So long as you follow the same legal procedure that you are undergoing tonight, which requires a public hearing, uh, and you relying upon the study that's still viable. So, it was discussed earlier that the studies have to be updated every eight years, so long as it's within that eight-year period, and you've followed all the other procedures, you can go up to the cap. The most important thing, of course, is this fee study calculation has given you the cap for impact fees. Uh, and you can always go below, but you cannot go over.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have another, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
No, no, oh.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just a, a question. When I, when we look at the other cities, i- is it that we're anticipating, because some of these cities are just really way off, um, in comparison, is it that they haven't done their change yet, or?
So I was able to get, um, when the latest Nexus Study was, uh, done for some of the cities that I included in my presentation. The most recent one was done in twenty-nineteen, and that was City of Verticia. Uh, I think the one before that was in twenty-ten, and that was Whittier. So
Is it, and is it possible these other cities that have lower fees are correcting a greater amount of property tax than the other cities are, and that may be the offset that we're looking at on that? And we're taking development fees in lieu of property taxes that are paid, and that they get a higher percentage of property tax return on the one percent envelope.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, that's a good ques-, and, and also, is it possible that other cities are not factoring in, uh, for example, uh, park facilities fees? Because if you look at this chart, we have the most expensive in terms of parks and recreation. So are other cities not accounting for their facilities related to parks? So we don't know that, because if you look at, let's say, City Department, one thousand dollars for parks? And I think based on the study, it is basically a full-loaded cost for parks and recreation.
Yeah.
So that may be one of the, one of the factors, I think.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, to, to the City Manager's point, And Mr. Mayor, members of the council, to, to the city manager's point. There is no legal requirement that we impose any impact fee. The question becomes about what do you do in the future? When you need to create these facilities that have been anticipated, you're gonna have to come up with the money somehow, and so that's what the mitigation fee act allows you to do. But going back to your original question, again, as long as it's below the amount, it could be amount of zero, that's certainly below the cap. Um, that's, that's up to your discretion.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have.
Yes, council member Sanchez.
No, 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 council member Dutton wants to say something.
I might be a while.
Okay, sure, yeah, mine's, mine's a quick one, I think.
You're on the committee, you invented this.
I, uh.
Okay, go, go ahead.
Mine's, mine's an idea that can maybe get us to a middle ground here. Uh, could you bring up the, the scales?
Sliding scales.
Sliding scales for the, for the overall. My, my idea would be, if entertained, would be that. We start off with like a sixty percent, and then in two years go up to eighty, and then in, you know, four, you know, four years go up to, to ninety. And then six years to a hundred. That would be an idea that I just kinda thought of if.
That's a possibility.
Possibility, just to throw that out there.
As the city attorney said, you can review it annually if you choose to do that.
No, I don't think that, well, in my opinion, it wouldn't be necessary. I, I think that, I'm just trying to throw out an idea of a, kind of a solution here.
Okay.
Just in case, just thought I'd throw it out there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, council member Dutton, we're waiting for you.
All right, so, um, do we know, because I have a pretty good idea when it started, the impact fees for the parks, the public works. Development fees, when it, wasn't it around the year two thousand?
Two thousand and six.
Two thousand and six. Mr. Coops, I know you heard it from, from, from our constituents and the actors around this council then. That put all those big fees, they were big fees in two thousand and six. And it has not curtailed any single family development, but we heard it from the developers, we heard it from the public. Oh my God, what are you doing? It's, it was a big number in two thousand and six dollars. We heard this, and was it just five years ago, o- o- over a hundred and sixty single family units built on Artesia? Didn't stop that. Um, yes, it's a big number today, but it won't be down the road. We're running out of land for it, this. And with this, a city that is over sixty percent rental, those are the people that need the parks. We are park poor in Bellflower, and this fee is designed to replace parks, add more square footage of parks. For the people in apartments that don't have backyards, that could go to a park, have that birthday, you know, for their kid in, in a park. Because they can't have it in the front yard of an apartment building. Um, but it's what Bellflower is, our industry of always says is rentals. We have that, we're park poor, there's only one way to do it, and can you put, that's a similar, there it is, you read my mind. So, single family, uh, home fees, the parks, from when up from, uh, went to, when the total increase is eight thousand dollars. We go to the multifamily, and I get it, it's fourteen hundred square feet to a thousand square feet, park fee seventy-four hundred dollars. It's not that much increase between them. And that's what Mr. Coops is saying, is, is the single family is way out of whack. So, let me tell you this. Rental income always requires more public safety, it's just the way it is. When you get housing that is on top of each other and crammed, that's where the public safety goes. So we have a big, uh, hit for public safety is, is, is in the public fees, is because we have to buy more public safety to go to this. It's a rule, it is written, the sheriff will tell you, they're not going in my street in single family homes, they're going to the high density areas within, within Bellflower. We need to replace those costs, and I'm pretty adamant about it. That's the future, and that's, it's just the way it is. Yes, I hate fee of the, fee of the deaf of, of the public or, or developers and taxing people. But as the attorney said, we're gonna come up short one day, and it's our duty here and now to be able to. Recover the cost, fees are just cost recovery, and it goes in the kitty, the parks fee goes in the kitty, the transportation, everything goes in the kitty. To make something better or expand, and that's where I sit with this. Thank you, Mayor.
You, you're welcome. Well, I, I just want to say that, um, in looking at this chart. Uh, the, 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 the biggest cost driver for Bellflower is the parks and recreation, not, not public safety. It's parking wreck, if you look at this, thirty thousand one hundred, public safety is only one eighty-two. So it's minimal, because, uh, in, in terms of the response time, it's not part of this facility. The, the response to the sher, by the sheriff is done by a contract that we pay for, not out of development impact fees. So I, I, I hear your question, I hear your comments about this, but, um. It just seems that, um, our city is way, way. Out of range compared to the other cities. So.
And, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Mr. Coops.
Um, like Mr. Dutton said, we impose this two thousand and six, and the idea of adding more park space is always. In the forefront, but two thousand, I can't think of one square foot that we've added in parks since two thousand and six. We've never added one in the last. What, can you name it, a park that we've bought a lot next to or increased?
A bought, no.
I know, you know, something that we acquired to make our square footage of our parks larger.
Palm Street Park, uh, River View Park.
We rented those, we didn't purchase them.
No, but we, we.
We acquired, right.
It's part of that, um, what do you call it, um, not own, but.
Uh, improvement.
Improvement.
Okay, I'll give you that. I was looking for purchases of.
Oh, no, we have, you're right, we have not, we have not. And those I can, I can think of. Since two thousand and six.
But if I'm a developer and I've got a lot in, uh, anywhere else, I've got one in Cypress or Whitty or anywhere where the impact fees are less. And I've got a lot in Bellflower, I'm gonna take my dollars to probably a lesser city for the impact fees, and then. We don't have anything, you know, it's nice to have the sixteen, it's even better to have thirty-nine. But if they don't build the house here because they're intimidated by these high prices and go to another city, we don't have a seventy percent, we don't have sixty percent. We don't have anything.
But that's what was said back when we, when previous council imposed those fees, and nothing's changed.
I get it, but you can see when I look at the chart, how, I see how far ahead of everybody else we are.
Um, and again, the city manager made a good point, that they get more property tax on the back end. Ours is very low. Unfortunately, nobody knows that.
So, your opinion is stay at thirty-nine thousand, or do you like the idea of graduation like a?
We should keep it the way it is.
Okay.
Council member Sanchez, what, I'm, I'm, I'm taking a poll here, not a vote, a poll.
Could, could we, could we offset, um, could we shift costs more towards a multifamily versus single?
No, you can't do that.
No, we can't.
Oh, it's the attorney, I don't want to put words into your mouth, but.
It's a study.
You already have.
It's a study.
Again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, these are the caps upon, you can't go any higher, so if you're suggesting taking, taking money from one category. And, and increasing it on something else, that you cannot do, you can't, but you can lower it within the categories.
Your, thank you, thank you for the clarification. I, I see, um, both sides, you know, I definitely don't want to, um, have the city in a position at one point in time where it's not capable and ready to. To cover the costs and expenses of the growth that we are seeing. Um, I personally would be in favor of a, a graduating scale. Whether it be, but, but one that doesn't require us to come back, one that's just, we set it in stone today. And, and doesn't have to come back in a year or two years, if we can do that. Um, but if not, then I would, I would leave it, I would leave it as is. Um, but I would prefer to do the grad, um, a gradual increase over the next four years. To a hundred percent. But that's my poll answer. Mr. Mayor?
All right, I hear you.
Well, I started the discussion, so I'm gonna, I would live with what was just said, and we know where Mr. Dutton stands, so you can be the deciding, uh, vote one.
So, so you want to be able to have a graduating that you don't take responsibility of when it goes high, but it's okay to do it low now, and then when you're not around.
I want to, no, I want to.
Talk about Victor, he wants to just have it imposed when nobody knows.
I want to encourage people to build single family residences in Bellflower, that's my bottom line, and I think that this amount of money is intimidating.
With the interest rate, it ain't gonna happen.
I, I will, uh.
Construction, as we know, it has stopped.
I, I support the, the, the increases, I, I want to be very clear about that, I do. Um, I'm, like I said, I'm in favor of this because I don't want to find ourselves in a position where down the road, the city can't, you know, cover the costs and expenses of the growth. Um, I'm, I'm just saying that I'm open to it, starting at the increase, you know, as of, from today, being eighty percent. And then the following year ninety and a hundred percent, or, or something of that nature, so that in the next four years, it hits a hundred percent. Instead of it just being a one-time lump sum jump, starting today, that's kinda where I stand.
Well, in, in, um, I was looking at the chart here, um, the closest to us is basically Artesia, for single family homes.
Who did their study in two thousand and nineteen.
Two thousand and nineteen, so three years ago, and they're charging twenty-eight thousand and some change. We're charging thirty-nine thou, twenty-eight thousand, and we're charging thirty-nine thousand and some change, so there is an eleven thousand gap. We're mu, higher than Artesia by eleven thousand. So what I was thinking is, I, I, I don't want to go lower than eighty percent. I mean.
No, I don't either.
It defeats the purpose, okay? Going low, lower than eighty percent.
And, uh, Mr. Mayor, to be clear on mine, this would only be for single family, everything else a hundred percent.
All they're talking about, single family homes.
Just want to be clear.
That's right, the, the other chart's fine, because those are income producers. If I build multifamily or I'm a commercial guy, I'm gonna generate some income off that property. The single family guy doesn't have that option. All he's done is added to the price of building the house. Can we ask staff, how many houses were built in the last year, single family? Do you know that number?
So we looked at the past four fiscal years, and I believe there were only two single family, uh, development in the city. Let me double check that.
It's because the fees were too high. No, but that's interesting, you know, so either way, we're not leaving a ton of money on the table, are we?
Um, so.
Now we're talking about.
I got an analogy.
All right.
The last meeting, we just did that Maplewood project, eight homes, right?
Uh-huh.
You think that developer would not build those eight homes for two hundred thousand?
Lot of variables there, because I don't know what he paid for the property.
Well, we don't know, but, but you gotta, you gotta think that that, that's, eight homes has gotta be, what is it, a four million dollar project?
Right.
At least, minimum, maybe it's more of a, probably a six million dollar project. Would you walk away from a deal for two hundred thousand, six million? Nobody would.
No, it's only a hundred and twenty-eight.
Yeah.
Sixty, the difference sixteen thousand, they increased only sixteen thousand.
On sixteen thousand, the increase is sixteen thousand, because he already paid the other.
He's in at sixteen, so he's cool.
That's chump change for eight houses.
Yeah.
You look at it that way, that's, thank you for bringing that up.
It's lower.
Yeah.
It's only sixteen thousand.
Sixteen, sixteen thousand a home, he wouldn't have walked away from that.
That's the current value, but he's gonna pay, if he builds now, after we.
He'd only pay sixteen thousand a house more.
The increase is sixteen thousand dollars.
He already paid the other.
Right.
Right.
So you're gonna bu, you're gonna build a seven hundred, eight hundred thousand dollar home, and you're gonna not build it because of sixteen thousand dollars.
Okay, well, I, that's, I get it.
Are you okay?
I'm okay.
All right.
Check with Victor over here.
He was okay before you said okay.
Yeah, when you look at it that way, there's only two houses that were built in four years.
Well, it kinda negates what we're talking about here, doesn't it?
And also, they increased only sixteen thousand compared to what they're paying now.
I'm ready to go for a vote.
All right, so we got a motion, I support it.
There's a motion, there's a motion in seconds, so.
All right, and.
All they need to do is trigger the.
And that included your motion, the things about the fifty percent, uh, remember there's another slide.
That's in the law.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, yeah, as is.
Yeah, that's in the law.
Everything as it is.
Yeah, they introduce, uh, uh, introduce it and adopt it, okay, all one motion.
We can change that, but that's the law right now, we can't charge the second fifty percent.
Oh, yeah.
No, that's not, we, we have discretion on that, I believe.
Do you have discretion on that?
Yes, it's part of our BMC.
Oh, that's part of the recommendation?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Oh, the ADUs, okay.
Yes, okay, so we're clear now. All right, uh, Ms. DeClerc, vocal please.
Council member Dutton?
Yes.
Council member Coops?
Yes.
Council member Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Santinas?
Aye.
What a sale.
All right, thank you.
That was fun, we haven't had one of those in a while. And then come out four oh.
You owe us next time, you know.
Uh, thank you so much, thank you so much, Will, then, for the study. So we'll see you, we'll see you in eight years, eight years, okay.
Yeah.
All right, mark it on your calendar, eight years from now.
Yeah.
All right, uh, Mr. Stewart, item thirteen A.
Right, yeah.
Uh, the next, next item is consideration items, consideration possible action to provide staff direction relating to the designation of citizen oversight board for the expenditure of proceeds. From the sale of the Bellflower municipal water system through the public work projects fund as outlined in resolution number sixteen dash fifty-three. So, as everybody's aware, or most people are aware, this water system finally got sold, uh, November third, twenty twenty-two. Uh, in twenty sixteen, when the voters, uh, decided to approve the authorization to sell the system. Included in that was a resolution that's attached to your staff report. What it really requires is a lot of things, but for the nine million dollars plus that we're gonna derive out of the water system. This provides citizen oversight for that. Now, there's a lot of ways to skin a cat, as you know, on the citizen oversight. One of the directions, one of the items that came up, we can create our own, uh, we can appoint a board, and we can set up a methodology to do that, to oversee the expenditure of these funds. Or, Mr. Malata pointed out to me, well, you know, most of these projects are recreation and parks oriented, we have the Recreation and Parks Commission in place now. And I think the way staff is leaning toward when we're writing this report is that we're leaning toward recommending that the council approve the Recreation and Parks Commission. As the citizen oversight board for the way these, these funds are expended, but it's purely a policy called the council. And we can do it any way that you'd like to, and if you have any questions, we can certainly answer it.
All right, thank you for that very exhaustive report. Counsel, any comments?
I believe that the money that we're speaking of is gonna be used in the park facilities. And who's closer to it than the current commissioners?
Right.
And I'm not in favor of creating another layer of bureaucracy, why not utilize the five that are on there? Their meetings can use a little more.
Substance.
I trust them, and I, I would lean towards allowing them to conduct this.
Okay. All right, council member Dutton?
Oh, I'm, I'm all for that.
You okay, all right, council member Sanchez?
I support that.
Yeah, I just want to add, I'm, 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 I'm supportive of the staff recommendation, and, um. Uh, it reminds me of what council member Sanchez said at the last meeting, when we approved the increase in the stipend for the commissions. That their meeting lasts only for fifteen minutes.
No, no more.
Now they gotta earn their money.
Now they can earn their money.
All right, I think we have a consensus here.
Want to vote?
Uh, I'd like, I'd like to have a motion.
A motion that we approve.
The motion, yeah, the motion would be to, uh, uh, designate the recreation staff, I'm sorry, the Recreation and Parks Commission to oversee the expenditure part of these projects.
So we're not creating another commi, commission?
You're just adding to their.
All right.
workload, workload.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
All right, motion by council member Coops, seconded by council member Sanchez to adopt the recommendation from staff. How's that? Good, all right, vocal please.
Council member Dutton?
Aye.
Council member Coops?
Aye.
Council member Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Santinas?
Aye. All right, um. Consent calendar, any, um, any conflicts?
Yes, Mayor, uh, I'm gonna be conflicted at a fourteen G.
Fourteen G?
Due to, uh, I have property within five hundred feet.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, I'm four, I'm also out on fourteen G because I have property within the radius of the Artesia Boulevard project.
So we cannot take, we cannot take action on G tonight?
I, I just want to point out.
Yeah, no, no apparent conflict, yeah.
Correct, I just wanted to point out that it is within, uh, a thousand feet, not five hundred. Uh, I'm sorry, council member Dutton is within five hundred, it is council member Coops who is within a thousand feet.
So you're, so you don't have to recuse yourself.
All right, well, then I'll be.
So only council member Dutton will be recusing himself on item, uh, thirteen G.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're good.
Uh, that's fine, I didn't realize, I didn't look at the.
No apparent.
Um, anyone who wants to pull an item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll pull item B and C.
B and C?
Just for comment.
Okay. All right, anyone else would like to pull an item from the agenda? Anyone else? Okay, let's start with item, uh, thirteen B, Councilmember Sanchez.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a quick comment on, on this, uh, this is regarding our approval of, uh, a contract with Special Olympics Southern California, and I, I know that all of us here care very deeply about our special needs community, and so just excited to see that we're continuing that partnership with Special Olympics for the Bellflower Aquatics, uh, program, so just wanna highlight that for our residents.
Okay.
And then, that's it for item B, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, I'll, but item thirteen C.
Uh, comment on that as well, Mr. Mayor, just quickly, um, thank, I wanna just thank the Mayfair High School History Club for its efforts, um, in digitizing our Carpenter House Museum, I think that's awesome, and that's a, that's a, can't wait to see what comes out of that project. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Uh, with that, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Coops, seconded by Councilmember Sanchez to approve the consent calendar, vote call, please.
Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Santinas?
Aye.
All right, uh, council reports, Councilmember Dutton?
I am nothing tonight.
Okay, Councilmember Coops?
Same thing, nothing tonight. I'm, I'm cool. Oh, I gotta read something, I gotta. No.
Saved by the mayor.
I know you have something.
Well, go on to Mr. Sanchez, and I'll be ready.
Okay, Councilmember Sanchez?
Um, Councilmember, uh, or Mayor, sorry, my apologies, uh, Mayor Sunny, uh, Santinas, as you know, um, we, uh, we part, we part, we, uh, recently had an opportunity to represent the City of Bellflower at a larger regional, uh, uh, item here in the county, um, and you, you very much thank you for your support, and I know you were gonna make the motion to support me on the, the La Casa Board, which is the, uh, a new, uh, agency being developed by SB six seven nine called the Los Angeles County Affordable Housing Solutions Agency. And, uh, proud to say that, uh, Bellflower will be representing the city and the region of the Gateway Cities, which includes about twenty-five other cities in this, on this agency. Um, the vote was unanimous, and, uh, again, just thank you for your support on that, and I look forward to working, uh, on this agency to represent our community and our region. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, well, congratulations on your, uh, election to that seat. As you, uh, as you may not know, let me just add something to that, it's a twenty-one-member board, correct?
Correct, Mr. Mayor.
And it, it's, um, it's throughout LA County, again, this is the Los Angeles County Affordable Housing Solutions Agency. So, it's a big deal for Bellflower to have representation in that board. Uh, the members of the, the other members of the board are, um, the county supervisors, or they're designated, uh, the mayor of Los Angeles City, City of LA, uh, the president of City of LA, and three other appointees by the mayor of LA, and then the, um, mayor of Long Beach, and then one representative from each of the four COGS and other representation, so it's a big deal for us. All right, thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, uh, for my, uh, comment here, I just want to thank the, uh, Bellflower Symphony for a wonderful concert. It was held on January twenty-eighth, that was, uh, the Overtures Opera and More. It was a fantastic event, and I really encourage our residents to please see that, uh, watch the concert. It's free for Bellflower residents, and I'm just kind of amazed that, um, or surprised that not a lot of Bell, Bellflower residents are going to see the concert. And I was, I was telling our, our manager today, the city manager of Norwalk was there, and after the concert, he came to me, he said, uh, Sunny, this is a wonderful concert, and he said, next, uh, next concert, he said, this is towards, I'm gonna bring two buses of seniors to Bellflower. And that's where you're gonna start charging. So, but I, I really, I really want you to put it on your radar, there's gonna be another concert in April, I don't know the exact date, but please, um, watch this concert, it's a wonderful concert. I think the ne, the next concert will be featuring the, the winners of the, um, the young artist competition. And I watched, I saw that last, last year, it was a fantastic evening. And the price is right for Bellflower residents, don't forget that. Uh, and then also, on a side note, I'd like also to adjourn this, uh, meeting for tonight in, um, in memory of Barbara Hopmeyer. Uh, Barbara Hopmeyer, uh, was born on February twenty-fifth, nineteen forty-two, and passed away on January twenty, twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three at eighty years old. Uh, she's the wife of, uh, she was the wife of, um, former council member and mayor of Paramount, Darrell Hopmeyer. Um, Barbara worked as a bookkeeper at Roanburg Mill for forty years, and, um, she was very active in her church, the Bellflower, the Emmanuel Reform Church. Uh, she lives behind a loving family, including her husband Darrell, daughters Holly and Heidi, five grandchildren, eight great-grandchildren, and lots of friends. And what is amazing to know about Barbara is, um, she fostered fifty-four kids while they're waiting for adoption. So she loved to connect with families, she loved kids, and, um, I got a chance to, um, to visit, uh, Barbara at least twice a year when Darrell was still in city council, we're both members of the executive committee of the Joint Powers Insurance Authority. She is just a very classy lady, and, uh, we're gonna miss her. So, uh, for tonight, um, we will adjourn this meeting.
Don't forget mine.
In memory of Minerva Rivera.
Well, I gotta read.
Oh, you have to read that. Go ahead.
All right, is it okay?
Yeah, your turn.
Okay, so, uh, also, I would request that we adjourn our meeting in memory of Minerva Rivera. Minerva was married, uh, born March ninth, nineteen twenty-seven in Puerto Rico, passed away November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two at the age of ninety-five. She moved to New York City at the age of eighteen and had three children, two daughters and a son. Minerva moved to California in nineteen eighty-three and was a proud resident of Bellflower since nineteen ninety-seven. She provided, provided care for her grandchildren, and they loved her dearly. She's survived by her children and her grandchildren, our deepest sympathies and heartfelt condolences go out to her daughter, Maida Valasquez, and the entire Rivera family. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, with that, uh, this meeting is gonna be adjourned in memory of Minerva Rivera and Barbara Hopmeyer to the next regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council